And Candy, take it away.
Okay, um, I was thinking we might just review briefly the proposed budget calendar. If we could take a look at that first, I think that would be helpful.
The two thirteen on the two seven?
The two thirteen, yes. We did adjust a couple of dates, um, because our notice requirements changed for the paper. Alright, so we've got on our list, um, just a review of the CIP and agency request today. Do plan to introduce the general fund budget at the regular meeting, March eleventh. We are anticipating receiving the school board budget request, March seventeenth. And we have a timeframe for which a proposed joint meeting with the school board on the budget is suggested. I haven't heard back from them on what date works good for their board. I don't know if Ernie and you've had any conversations with, well Margaret was here, I don't know if she's come on, with Margaret on potential dates for that.
I don't know.
Okay, alright, um, we would like to try to establish at least, um, we've got one to three full days. During the retreat, you all expressed, maybe not three David, but during the retreat, you expressed the interest in having longer work sessions and fewer of them. So, that's where that came from. Some date ranges that work, um, were suggested, March seventeenth through the nineteenth, anytime in there, March twenty-fourth and fifth, and then March thirty-first through April third. Those are just some suggested ranges that we could look at, uh, having work sessions.
I'm gonna put it out there, Tuesdays are a little better for me than any other day, if it's gonna be a long one.
Okay, Tuesday's good.
I'm a believer in losing a whole day, if I'm gonna lose one.
I am.
But if you're gonna make me lose half a day, give me the morning.
Full day's fine with me, um, having a morning. Mr. Farr, what do you think?
I'm good. The twenty-fifth is bad, other than that, I'm good.
Eighteenth?
March eighteenth?
Yeah.
That's what you're saying?
Mm-hmm.
And that's for?
That's Tuesday.
After St. Patrick's Day?
Well, we can start an hour late.
Yeah.
Good point.
How about the nineteenth? Or Jessica, what is your, I know you said Tuesdays.
They can't. So that's our rabies clinic week, so, um.
What's?
Uh, if we did that week, Tuesday would be best.
Alright, I'll do it.
Which week?
March eighteenth.
Okay, it's March eighteenth.
What time we starting?
It's up to you all.
Yeah, what do you like? What kinda start do y'all need to get?
Ten to twelve? And then break for lunch?
I like that.
Oh, I'm gonna flip your way.
Okay.
Two, twelve, begin.
Alright, what time does it? Ten to twelve. And then lunch?
Oh, ten to twelve.
Ten to twelve, and then lunch. Do we wanna eat in?
I, I, yeah, I would like.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
Twelve to one?
Then resume at one?
Yeah, one to?
One to four?
Okay.
I mean, we can just do it like a working lunch.
Right.
Right.
We don't need an hour.
Alright.
Okay.
A working lunch?
Yeah, but.
So, ten to four?
Ten to four.
On the eighteenth?
Right.
Okay, got it.
Yep. Alright.
Okay.
And just make sure, if we're in the old boardroom, make sure somebody lets, um, social services know, cause that's their meeting day, they'll need to
Okay.
move location.
Okay. Okay, do we want to look at any other dates now, or do we wanna do that on the eighteenth?
I mean, we're here, we're looking.
Yeah, okay, it'll fill up.
Eighteenth, then the twenty-fifth?
I can't do twenty-fifth, but, you know.
How, yeah.
I can't, I can't do beyond the twenty-fifth, I can't do twenty-six, twenty-seven, or twenty-eight.
Twenty, I hate to lose Monday, um. Sunday at two.
April Fool's Day. April first.
Um.
Pretty fitting.
Yeah, I lose. I'm okay with it.
April Fool's Day, ten to twelve.
Um, I'm, hmm.
Oh, he said he couldn't do after the twenty-fifth.
No, 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 it was just like, I can't do twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Oh, okay.
Sure, I'll do the first.
Saying ten to four?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, something to keep in mind that, um, let's see. We would need to unfortunately decide about any tax rate, um, proposed increases by March twenty-sixth, so that we can get the advertisement to the paper and things for an April tenth, um, public hearing.
I mean, do we wanna do a budget work session the first week in March? Like the third through seventh?
We can do it, but we won't have the budget bef- uh, then, most likely, cause we're shooting for the eleventh to have the full budget. I mean, we could maybe do some pro- other preliminary type thing.
The first round is usually, we're getting an overview of everything.
Right.
We hit the non-agency or agency, non-agencies and like the NFPs and all those guys, right?
I mean, if we need to do the twenty-fifth, I can, um, try to reschedule my, I just have a doctor's appointment that day, I can try to reschedule.
I don't hate for you to have to do that, cause they're hard to get.
I mean, I mean, it's not like it's, I can.
You'll get your heart broken.
It's not life threatening?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I was gonna say, it's not my cardiology. Um, but then I was like, don't say that.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be great.
March twenty-fifth.
Thanks David.
Thank you, yes.
Yeah, so, twenty-fifth?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, and that replaces anything, or that's just in addition to what we, the eighteenth, twenty-fifth, and first, is that what we're doing, or?
I feel like we're not gonna need them all.
Well.
Yeah.
We could, yeah, if we get to the twenty-fifth, and you don't need the first, you can always cancel.
That would be great.
Okay, but we'll keep it on, just in case.
Yeah, I, I have some tentative, I, I have a tentative something on the first, just someone coming by to visit, so, um, probably if we need to do something the morning of the first, that would be fa- I mean, if we can be done by lunch, that would be great, on the first. But if we're not, I'll hang around.
Okay.
So, tentatively, ten to twelve on the first?
Yeah.
Open-ended if we needed. March twenty-fifth.
Okay. And then, somewhere in there is a possible joint work session with the, with the school board.
So, that would be six o'clock?
I'm assuming it would be in the evening, um.
Probably the week of the seventeenth.
I, I have no day restrictions after hours, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Whatever y'all focus on that.
I'm fine that entire week in the evening.
So, let's just say the week of the seventeenth, and see what happens.
Can we just give a suggested date right now, so I can put it down? I got footers I gotta dig that week.
Let's see, are we meeting, we're meeting the eighteenth already, that would be a really long day.
Let's try the twentieth.
Twentieth evening.
Thursday?
Yeah.
The twenty, March twentieth?
Mm-hmm. And, uh, nine, and fallback would be nineteenth?
Okay.
Let's try the twentieth first.
Twentieth first, and then the nineteenth if that doesn't work.
Yeah.
So, six P M?
Six.
Six?
That's, is that the same as the planning commission? Right, third Wednesday?
The fourth Wednesday.
Fourth Wednesday, sorry, sorry.
Fourth Wednesday.
You're on the twenty-sixth.
So, you're, you're the twenty, twenty-sixth.
Oh, twenty-six, oh, okay, alright, I thought you said nineteenth.
Alright.
That's a fallback, if the twentieth doesn't work.
Okay.
And then if we need to schedule something, the week of, uh, second week of April, cause you have an additional if needed.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
Thursday, that's, well, that's the jail, the jail board meeting day, from twelve to two.
Uh, on the tenth?
On the ten, April tenth, yeah.
So, we'll keep the tenth?
We can, it would just need to be in the afternoon, if that's, or we could do a night work session.
That would, half, afternoon would be better for me.
If that would work better.
So, it's the second Thursday?
Yeah.
We're in March?
April.
April, April tenth, so.
April, April tenth.
No, I mean, the jail board meeting.
Yeah.
Jail board's twelve to two.
Yeah. Hopefully, we won't need that, but if we do.
Alright, so what do we do? The tenth?
Tenth.
Penciling in?
What time?
What's good for you all, I can do it after two, Jesse and I could do it after, well, three.
I was gonna say, three o'clock.
Yeah, three, after three.
Three to five.
I mean, I'm good that day, so.
Is evening better for you, Jessica?
I, three to five, okay, I guess.
Okay.
If given enough.
Okay. Okay. Good deal. Alright, so then, uh, just following down the rest of the calendar, some of it's for staff, as far as notice publications, um. Let's see, we would plan to get the tax rates and personal property tax relief percentage to the commissioner by Friday, April eleventh. Um, we will have the budget public hearings, well, it's scheduled for Tuesday, May thirteenth, at the regular meeting. And then, the treasurer can get the tax bills out the week of May twelfth, and we will schedule the, um, twenty, FY twenty-six budget adoption appropriation on Tuesday, June tenth. That's the regular board meeting day. So, we have to wait at least seven days after the public hearing to adopt the budget. So, if you wanted to do it before the June tenth date, um, after May thirteenth, we could, but we just line it up with your regular meetings.
So, our March twenty-fifth meeting is when we would, uh, decide on real estate and property taxes?
Yes.
Looks good.
Okay, great. Okay, um. If there aren't any other questions or anything about the calendar, we can move on. Do you all wanna look at agency funding first, or capital improvement plan first? We didn't invite, um, Susan's for here, since a lot of the items on the FY twenty-six list are technology related.
Let's do that.
Okay. We didn't, didn't invite everyone, and if there's someone you would like to, um, have speak about their request, we can certainly schedule them to come.
I did not, I didn't put anything in any priority order, I, I just did it in order of department, um, by number, so, um. Wasn't sure how you wanted to tackle this.
So, and all of these have been submitted by staff, we have not done any, um, vetting of any of their submittals, so this is all, everything that's been submitted so far. Some things, um, there are a few things we're still waiting on some pricing for, that, um, that's indicated on the sheet. So, once we get that, we'll update you all on those things.
I will say, the one that I think pays for itself, and pays for more things, is the short-term rental system. Twelve, one eighty, and three, two, I don't know what that means, uh, it's just apartment.
I had that, I had that flagged too.
Yeah, uh, this is something I know we've been advocating for, for a while. And if you guys look at the reflection of our collections, obviously, there's a two percent increase since the prior year. You know, we're, if we had a good system in place, and I, I can speak for this in pretty much every business I've ever had, that allowed for an online platform for people to report and pay, your collections go up astronomically, especially on-time payments. So, I'm gonna definitely say, that's one we gotta do.
And also, some of these things are more, um, things that would go in our capital outlay section of the budget, they're not necessarily capital improvements, if that makes sense.
It's kinda hard for me to think about, I guess this is more informational, cause we don't have an idea of what our non-recurring revenue is currently, right?
Right, um, I can venture a guess, we're gonna have more non-recurring revenue than recurring, at the moment.
Sure.
So, um, yes, I think it'll be easier to.
Two commas, or one comma, non-recurring?
I don't know yet, sir. You keep trying to get that out of me.
I know.
I don't know, we're working on it.
I mean, I'm certainly interested, like, uh, it's kinda hard to look at without dollars and cents of trying to look. But I will say, the one that is gonna pay for itself is a short-term rental system.
Right. The, the only other thing that I wanted to bring up, and I'm not even sure this is the right place for it, but under Parks and Rec, I was wondering, we had talked about getting the survey done for the Sturt Park, uh, property, cause we need to get a survey done, and then there's some of that forest money that's
Right.
gonna be available, um, is this the place where we should have that?
So, that you, we would just need to just do, because that money's already in the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so, we, we just need a directive, or put it on the agenda to, to have it moving forward, or?
Yeah, I think we've actually already gotten a list of, um, surveyors to try to get quotes from. So, I think it's already in motion, it's just not, um, yeah.
Okay.
I heard we got money from the forestry department.
Yes.
Let's use that for the Livingston Park.
Pocket.
Pocket. Pocket Park?
So, um. Do we wanna go from the top and go down, or just, um?
Alright, I mean.
So, if there are things that you're interested in, we can go ahead and build them in the budget, as, you know, as we're working on it right now, and then you can obviously can go back, once we know the numbers, um, and pick and choose from there. But if there are things that are on here, that you're like, no, we're not gonna do that, you know, right now, then we'll also know that, and we can not put it in the budget.
Yeah.
I mean, I'd kinda look at most of it, and I'd say, there's a lot that I wouldn't.
We did not include, uh, things like vehicles, vehicle requests in this.
So, this switch stuff, didn't we talk about this last year? The remote site network switch replacement? Maybe that was a winter rain thing.
Yeah, I believe, Susan, all these are new, right, they're not anything that we?
I can't recall off the top of my head, but we, they were made to replace other switches, like, you know, in previous budget cycles, or current budget cycles.
I tell you what, it'd be a heck of a lot easier going through agency funding right now, it'd take us ten minutes.
Yeah, this is a lot to read.
This is a lot to read, I think it's a lot to digest, and we don't have any numbers to look at, objectively.
I, I, ju- just to let you know, I went through all of them, and these were the recommendations from staff. It's hard to really judge, um, whether it's under FY twenty-six or twenty-seven, cause.
It should be delineated on your sheet.
Well, I, well, twenty-seven is the, is the last two pages, I know that.
Oh.
But, um.
There's some big numbers on twenty-seven.
Do you have the big one, Ernie?
Yeah, the, the first two pages are, are twenty-six.
Are twenty-six, and the second two pages are twenty-seven.
The last one, two, three, four pages.
So, we have twenty-seven?
No, I'm sorry.
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Should go all the way out to thirty.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, the next two pages are twenty-seven, and then twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and then the last page is thirty.
Are you looking at the big sheet, Ernie?
I think he's looking at the small.
I'm looking at the small, I'm, I'm looking at the first, I'm, I'm looking at mostly the twenty-six, since those are the ones that were.
Big bad boy. Oh, that's because they're right there.
He might have those notes.
Yeah.
Oh. Did I steal yours? There might be some notes on that.
Here, why don't you keep the one, notes on it then? Jesse, you got one?
I have a big one.
Okay.
So, the total for all of FY twenty-six, um, there are a couple of things we're waiting on quotes for, um, is a million ninety-three thousand six eighty-nine. The things we're waiting on quotes for have to do with the asphalt repair here around, uh, courthouse area, and convenience centers, and then roof repair here at the courthouse, we've got some leats over J and D, General District Court.
Yeah, I mean. Finally got, knowing what dollars are there. I also support the Livingston Park.
Where are you putting it?
I think it's at the building department, is that where it's going?
Uh, I, I mean, I don't know, that's been discussed, um, there were some good points that were brought out today about that in our staff meeting, or the potential for that. That it may not be the greatest location, given the amount of foot traffic from Town Creek.
Sure.
The amount of people walking down the middle of the road is bad.
And that hang out of the laundromat in, kinda in that area, that's a consideration, I think.
It's like, it's gotten worse in the last two or three months, don't you think?
Yeah, it's kind of really increased.
And there are some rough-looking people. So, what was the other proposed place?
Um.
Talk to Jerry about that.
Yeah, we did talk about it more, but, um, it's not in Livingston proper, but we talked about kinda over at the Livingston, at the Nelson Center, kinda back in that area, um.
Does that mean paying them more, though?
Nah, I don't think that would mean paying them more, I don't think so.
I'll, I'll, I'll study on this.
Um, but yeah, give it some thought, but.
I saw, well, at the merchant meeting, Maureen had held up the plan that was done in, is that eighteen?
Yeah.
And there was a place for a park on that.
It's behind the theater?
Yeah.
I think that's where it was, yeah.
Yeah, should check on that.
Yeah, another spot is behind the, the people who just bought the Hoover building. Tractor place right behind there. That's a little bit more village-ish.
Yeah.
But that creek is weird.
Yeah, the problem is, yeah, there's some floodplain areas, and then if we could do it on property we already own, that would be good. But maybe we could strike up a partnership with somebody to, to do something like that.
I'll study on it, actually, we have a merchants' meeting, so I'll bring it up. Yeah?
Mm-hmm, yes. Yeah, I had someone else suggested a dog park, kinda over there beside planning and zennings, a lot of people apparently get out and use it as such, as a dog, little dog area, I don't know.
You wanna have a dog park?
But.
They get gas and chicken.
Yeah, that's what my office tip did us for, apparently, for everybody coming from intensive data.
But so, I think that, yeah, the Livingston Park needs some more thought, as far as location. Those, um, the forest sustainability grant funds can be used for outdoor recreation purposes as well.
You said they can, they can.
Yes.
Yeah.
When are we actually gonna be on the hook for this three million dollars for the radio upgrade, and the one and a half million dollar radio tower site?
Um, it's optional, but we should probably start looking for, in particular, the Trump radio system, just for, to solve, you know, traffic issues, and then the, uh, one point five million tower site is to improve communications and, and way out of like, the southern part of the county, if, you know, we chose to do so.
So, is the, the three million is the, going to the Trump system?
Yes.
Who builds that? Motorola? Yeah, yeah, I guess that's our radio, we use Motorola.
And, and the good news is that the upgrade that we did back in twenty, fifteen eighteen, the Trump component of that would be built on top of existing infrastructure, it's not, it's not a full-putt, star, open situation, it's kind of, it's, it's an enhancement. So, there, you know, it's, it's not like you're starting, sorry, I'm just.
So, the one point five million, that is buying a location and building it, estimate?
Um, typically, you would, you would, you would lease a site, you may lease, lease land for a power site, and then you would construct a tower.
And so, your annual operational cost is including the lease for the property?
Um, we've been fortunate, we only have one site in the county that we currently pay a lease. There, we, we might, we'd have to pay a lease, another option, bringing the cost down on that, is to, um, utilize a site that I believe is in Buckingham County, that we could possibly partner with them to, um, construct something there for shared use with them. So, this has been the worst-case scenario.
Okay. Alright, so, that's not including a lease, is what it sounds like, the forty-three thousand annual, okay. Um, do you have potential sites that would be best?
Um, no, we, we really need, um, a consultant or Motorola to start to look at locations and how well, you know, they will serve areas that have gaps in coverage. So, so typically, you know, you, they don't do that until you're, you're really ready to seriously pursue, consider, um, identifying a site and.
Alright, so should that, so if that's in twenty-seven, shouldn't the Motorola seeing what we need be in twenty-six?
Um, and a lot of that work would be done at, at no charge by Motorola. Um, one reason I put it in the budget this way is so that, you know, if we had eye-in from the board, we could start to work toward the planning for, you know, improvements to coverage, upgrades to, to the Trump system, and it, it would be a multi-year, a multi-year process. But I didn't figure there's really any slits in putting it on the books for next fiscal year, because I don't think there's any way we could be ready by next fiscal year to be, you know, expending any money.
Well, we're gonna have a lot going on in the South District by twenty-twenty-seven. So, I.
Not a bad mountain there.
Not, so. Not, so we should probably get that ball rolling, especially if it's not gonna cost us money. Though, the getting them to survey our needs and what it's gonna cost.
Okay.
So, does that make sense?
Yeah.
But would we have to sign a contract with them for development of the tower site in order to get that free service?
Um, I think it's just more just a one step at a, one step at a time. It's like, okay, you know, the, the board has expressed an interest in, um, starting to move in the direction of improving coverage, deploying a Trump radio system. Um, it's time for us to roll up our sleeves and look at what those two projects look, look like. Look at what locations service best. What, you know, what are the obstacles to building a tower in any given location? And it just takes time.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I think we can, I think we can get started on the process without expending any money.
Beautiful.
Um, in current fiscal year. It, I mean, maybe twenty-six, but, I don't know. I, I can talk to Motorola about whether there will be any costs that they think we would incur just if we started, you know, working on that in the future.
Do you think, do you think you'll be able, you could find that out before our, we finish our twenty-six budget?
Awesome, thank you.
So under, uh, FY twenty-seven, um, county facility study?
Yes.
It's, uh, the first twenty twenty-seven, right at the top. Um, so does that assess what, what we have and what our future needs are going to be? Or is this mostly just for repairs and servicing of what we have?
I think it could be all of those things.
So who would we be paying that money to?
That would likely be an architectural firm that does those types of studies. Uh, that was just a, kind of a wild guess on my part. I don't know if it'd be that much, but, um, could certainly find out. The schools' facility study, I think, was fifty thousand-ish.
Because the one we haven't gotten yet?
Correct, but I do have it and I will send it out.
Okay.
I haven't looked at it yet.
Does, does that include school administration offices?
This, this particular item?
Or the one that you already have, either one?
No, the one that I already have, I, it does not. And that was, uh, a verbal, verbally related to me by Dr. Hester.
Okay.
That it does not incorporate that, cause that was.
Okay.
Much later in the process.
So that would be included in this, in twenty twenty-seven?
I mean, that's something we could include in that.
Well.
It, it just depends on what. I guess what timeframe.
I, 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 you know, I've, I've, I've heard that there are, you know, that, you know, that the schools don't know whether necessarily, if they're going to be staying or have to find other, or other place. It would be good to try to figure all that out at a time.
Right. I mean, there's definitely preliminary conversations and, and people looking at different things along those lines.
So that's ongoing. That's ongoing, so we don't have to flag something here to do that.
I guess my other concern is that's a, not that I'm a big fan of spending seventy-five K on that, but we got a letter from the common most attorney indicating that he asked five years ago. So punting it to twenty twenty-seven would really put some smiles on some faces. Uh, you know, I mean, like.
I don't understand.
Why, we have a problem with room.
Right.
Which has been established and talked about publicly.
Yeah.
We're still punting it two years down the road. I, I mean, is that what I'm gathering?
It can certainly be moved.
Okay.
Yeah. Um. The problem is there's a domino effect. Somebody's gotta move out in order to make his space needs request a reality.
Yeah.
Here in the courthouse.
Yeah.
Um, and figuring what that's, figuring out what that's gonna look like.
And really, this, this school board is well aware of the predicament.
Yeah.
I mean.
Yeah.
And talked about, for sure. Um, so we've paved the road, in a sense.
Would be interesting to see what that facility study looks like, just to see. It might not have addressed, um, administrative needs in that study. But it might shed light on some possibilities for administrative space.
Right, exactly.
So, you know, that could happen without having to wait for twenty-seven for this study.
Right.
Right, correct. So, yeah, I will, um, forward that out to the board this evening.
Yeah.
I'm excited about this report. Been waiting a long time for that bad boy.
Yeah.
David, what are your, what are your takes on the, the shelter trailer proposals for EMS?
Well, it's first I've heard of it and it looks like there's no choice. It's a federally mandated.
Oh, okay. I didn't know that.
Where does it say that?
Bottom of that page.
Sheltering for companion animals is federally required when opening shelters.
So, yes, if you, we would have one shelter trailer that would, um, have equipment that would set, set up the shelter for people. And if you do that, then it's a federal requirement that you accommodate their animals as well.
Hmm.
So you either do two or you do none.
Yes. I mean, we already have established, um, shelters in an emergency. We just don't have, we don't have, like, the cots and things for people and, and, um, things that we need to really.
And a trailer, have it, move it around.
Right, and to be able to move that, those things, uh, very easily.
Is it still gonna be a federal mandate?
No, it's a question.
Great question.
And some of these things, um, there may be grant opportunities out there for.
Currently.
Yeah. And we would certainly, you know, go for any of those opportunities that we can.
Hundred people.
And a hundred and fifty animals.
You're like, oh, we're just gonna beat a dead horse. So the trunking, we talked about it last year. And this fixes our issue with Wintergreen.
Right.
Communication with us.
What did you say, aggregate?
It, it, that fixes our issues.
Um.
Come closer, come on here. Come on up here.
Yeah, that's cool. Um, well, there're, there're two problems with Wintergreen. One is Wintergreen's dispatch console in the center. Wintergreen also has AG infrastructure for, you know, the repeaters on the towers and there are actually radio communications in the field. So the thought with the trunking is that would also enable us to roll Wintergreen in, um, on the communication side, using a newer sys, system, better coverage. The trunk system doesn't restrict us. We currently have four frequencies and, you know, they, they can only be used for four different, you know, talk pads. Fire and rescue typically, fire and rescue backup, sheriff, paging. Upward government services, and then we have paging. But, um, when you go to a trunked system, you can create talk groups. So you can have many more groups of people whose communications aren't heard by others. So it's, it's just a system that would give us greater capacity to accommodate Wintergreen. Um, and also provide better communications during incidents for, say, the sheriff's department, fire and rescue. You know, I, I've heard that both from, from the sheriff, from dispatchers, you know, that there really is a need to expand upon that. So we have not addressed the situation with the Wintergreen gatehouse, and that's something that's still, we're still trying to sort through.
Which was what we debated a lot last year.
Yeah.
Okay. Is Wintergreen gonna help us pay for this?
Um, I would say it's doubtful that they, that they have the capital to do it, but, you know, I could be wrong. If, if, I guess it would all just come down to their needs versus how much they could, could contribute. Um, but I, I think it's a direction we need to go in regardless of whether Wintergreen is, um, gonna be able to absorb some of that, that cost for us. That, you know, do they just, I, I don't know what they do, you know, it's, like I say, it's just, it's kind of a lot of details to be sorted through as far as what, what really works for everybody moving forward and how Wintergreen's gonna operate in the future. So there would be now the, mm, three to four hundred thousand dollar increase in annual costs related to it as well. Wow. It's, it's just, it's a much more sophisticated, much more sophisticated type of system. A lot more electronics involved and therefore increases in maintenance costs.
I have a question. Uh, so is the annual operational cost for that high because of the number of vehicles? And, uh, so if we're including Wintergreen police, say, say we increase our police number by ten percent, is this annual cost going up because we have more people on the system?
I would say no, not really. I would say there is just a, a basic system cost that's not based on a per user or per talk group cost. Where, you know, your cost goes up there is typically in subscriber units, you know, the mobiles and the portable's that they're using in the field. I mean, I could, I can follow up and, and see how that equates. I mean, like, right now, typically, our maintenance is based on, you know, number of sites. That's a big driver because there's certain equipment, electronics required at each site. So that, that's what primarily drives that, that cost. So, for instance, you know, a new tower site in Southern Nelson, that would drive up that cost as well.
I like the idea of a recreation master plan. I still, not sold on it yet.
Where's that?
Very last page. Very last.
For FY twenty-seven, yeah.
You know, in some ways, the, the foundation would be able to, you know, based on, you know, things that they come up with for fundraising and where people are willing to put money will, are things that'll become our priorities, more or less.
Right, right. And that's valid.
Yeah. Not that that takes the place of this, but.
It can.
I guess you could say it could, but, um.
Well, I mean, I modify my strategies as opportunities reveal themselves.
Right.
Well, I, well, in that, a board needs to have a, a common goal. So maybe in the beginning, it's, it's there cumulatively what they think the goal should be.
Alright.
ECC. What would be ECC? Um.
Well, so are we just gonna go through here, check yes and no? Do we wanna just, it's kinda hard to do that without an idea of how much money we got.
The Starlink thing.
Oh, yes.
So.
It's on the second page of FY twenty-seven.
I'm suspicious by the cost.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Cause I have Starlink.
Yeah.
And I can take that bad boy anywhere I go and it costs me a hundred dollars a month. And I have been all over the state and as long as it can see the sky.
Yeah.
That bad boy works. So I am not understanding how two of them cost ninety-one hundred dollars.
I paid five hundred.
With a thousand dollars.
It's more than?
Yeah.
No, I paid four hun, four or five hundred dollar deposit and I pay a hundred dollars a month. And it's better than Firefly.
Is, is he talking about, um, two, I don't know, two Starlink mobile units? He, like, he's gonna set up an internet site to make available others, I believe. Is, that's the only thing I can think of there.
But that's.
To set up mobile in, internet as well as transfer data and make phone calls. So he's almost setting up a little, little mini ISP in a disaster area.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, this is for, more for, yeah, disaster response.
Yeah, but it's not hard to do even then. I mean, down in, when the disaster hit down south, I mean, just gets you a really big battery, plug that sucker in, throw it out. You, have you ever seen one calculate itself? Let it just do its thing and, and you get, you know, two hundred fifty megabytes a second.
And we can double check that cost and see where it came from exactly, but.
I mean, I'd be just, I'm skeptical of, if it is for that, then it's a really simple fix, a giant battery, you know. Spend fifteen hundred dollars on a really good lithium battery setup and it'll run this thing for like fifteen hours.
I, I'm not understanding why we need two as well, but. That really seems like a grant thing, too.
It could, a lot of these things could be.
Yeah.
Good grant, um, opportunities.
So since we're looking at it, what, um, can you specify in a little more detail what's, what building renovations are needed at the building department?
At the what?
At the building department?
It's falling into the creek.
Yeah, as I say, if you have a chance to walk, walk around back, you'll see the sea and the busting out.
Bolldozing?
I've not been back there.
Yeah, we, we do have.
Actually, you probably shouldn't.
Probably shouldn't be very expensive.
So that is filter. It's built on filter.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and every time the creek gets up, it takes a little bit with it and it's settling. Um, so there's a decent crack in the back of the building.
Mm-hmm. Um, we do have, I don't know how old it is now, but it, an architect evaluation of the building.
It was like four hundred and fifty, half a mil.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
If I remember right.
Yeah.
When we bought McGinnis Building, we did that.
Mm-hmm.
We, how much did we pay for the McGinnis Building?
I don't know, I wanna say a hundred and twenty thousand.
It's like a hundred and twenty-five miles. Yeah.
I don't know what, maybe you know, or you guys would know what, what you would do to, um, remediate the fact that it's built on filter. Is there something you can do about that or not?
There's a thousand things you can do. I mean, ultimately, the best long-term fix is to take it down and build something on a foundation that's got actual, you know, uh, rebar, whatnot, put in there. This one, it's like a staircase break in the block. I've, it's in a couple of different areas. Um, you know, yes, it is an indication that it's failing. I don't. I don't know if that means it's gonna fail in five to ten years and of course, no, no one can speculate that, it could be the wrong flood and it takes it, but I remember at the time, Ernie, we had to dig deep in our heads, when it came up and the dollar sense came back to us, basically even the building department said, yeah, it's probably not worth that much.
Right.
Well, the barrier is you can only, um, improve it so much per year based on the fact that it's in a floodplain.
Yeah.
With those rules.
My concerns with knocking it down and building a new one is I'm a touch disillusioned by the cost of the social services building and it just.
Oh, sure, yeah, yeah. It's a million dollars.
No, it's more than that.
Oh, yeah, a million, yeah.
And I just, if I could advocate for a private person building it and selling it to the county, I, it just, it's unbelievable the amount of money that gets spent when the county builds the building.
I'm not even sure we can, could knock it down and rebuild in that same space.
It's unfathomable.
Yeah, I don't think they could.
You can knock it all down except for a wall and it can still be utilized as a non-conforming structure in a floodplain. It's pretty sure.
I'm.
That's pretty scary.
I've heard that before.
Yeah, you can, even if it's in a floodplain.
But how much can you build back for a hundred and fifteen thousand?
I've never heard, I don't, I don't think I've ever really, I don't think there's a cert- a limited amount of performance to rebuild it in a floodplain. I think it really comes down to how much of the non-conforming structure are you knocking down? Um, but you can, you have the ability to do that, leave the wall up and then build right on top of the exact same footprint. Okay?
I guess what was he trying to achieve with a hundred and fifteen thousand, oh, major repairs?
Yeah, that's just the amount of the half of the assessed value currently. That's how much you can do.
That's how much we could do.
Yeah.
You can only do half the assessed value? I have never heard.
Because it's in a floodplain.
Right.
Yeah, but, okay, interesting.
I mean, there are certainly things that would qualify as.
This was a calculated thing, not have anything to do with the project and its true cost.
Right, yes. I mean, there are things we could do as Band-Aid type things to the building, but that's what they would be.
Did they fill out the survey on their needs for, uh?
That, they did not because I have that information based on the space needs that, um, PMA did with them, so I already have that.
Could we revisit that? I'm just, I'm, I, I just, you know, after, after what's hap- what happened in, you know, in Asheville that I got to witness, I could just see, you know, that, that being a big, you know, a massive washout that was, that's gonna, I mean, I think we should, we should try to be proactive and figure out if we.
You mean an alternate space for the building?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Planning and zoning, the point.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we, we, we discussed it before, of course.
We looked at it, but it was like three million, okay, again, that was the, the, the initial number that then led us astray. I think the total, when we were looking at doing DSS and planning the building was like, it was an ungodly number.
Could you?
It was ungodly, I mean.
Yeah, and, I mean, can you, can you keep the front wall and move it, let it out of the floodplain?
Yes. There's, there's no.
Not on the same footpath, no.
There's nothing good over there.
There's nothing, it's not good anywhere.
No, no, there's nothing good anywhere over there. Now, there's also, nothing says they couldn't also somehow fit into the courthouse too.
Sorry. That was a joke, right?
Yes. So.
What about, what, what, what about the Nelson Center? I mean, I'm.
For planning and zoning and building inspections potentially?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I think that would be a possibility, um.
I mean, there's space there.
There is space there.
They've been, they've been pretty outspoken about the fact that they'd like to know what the future holds, you know, and get something.
Well, we don't know that, do we?
Get something in place.
Right, I mean, that's another.
And that's more rent?
That's more rent.
Oh, it would be, it would be more rent, but, yeah.
At that point, you just stay over there until.
Yeah, I don't, I need to find out what the, I know extension is in that building right now, I don't know what the counties, I don't know how they came to be in that space and what we have an obligation to provide them with space, could that?
To extension?
Yeah.
Yes, we do.
Could they go somewhere else and potentially use that space that they're in for? I don't know, that's just.
We, we have an obligation to provide extension space.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes. So, um, in recent events of the telephone system going down just last week, is, are, an upgrade in twenty twenty-six? Um, are we gonna be able to keep patching things together or this is a legitimate timeline?
Um, there's really nothing wrong with the phone system. The problem with the phone system was our, um, carrier, our, our phone service provider.
Okay.
They had some network issues.
Okay.
And that, that's what took that down.
Okay.
The age of the phone system really isn't that bad, but unfortunately, the company has declared an end of life. And it's a phased approach, so we just have to, um, you're, every year you keep, you're rolling the dice a little bit more on, um, being able to expand it or being able to do certain things with the, get support on it. So it's just something that we really need to get on the radar and, um, as I mentioned in the justification, um, they expect there'll be some pretty deep discounts initially to move us to a different platform with the same, the same company. So it's just, it's really, I'm just starting looking at it, but the, the system's a bit shaky.
Okay. And it's, the plan is to stay wired up, not go internet from, is that correct?
Um, I, I think it's a better solution for an organization of our size, just to have a on, on-premise system.
So just trying to move it forward a little bit. Candy, do you think we should hold the rest of this in abeyance and go on with the agencies? We've had some general discussion of all the things that floated to the surface and the other things are probably more likely to be looked at once we know what revenues are close to?
I think we can probably handle agencies pretty quick.
Yeah.
Objectively, like within fifteen minutes.
Yeah, I don't know that we can reach any real conclusions about these outside of, unless there's anything else people want to bring up.
I don't think there's anything we can actually do in making a decision not knowing what I think we have.
Right.
Yeah, I think thought it was just more of a, just a review kind of process and getting these things kinda in your, in your minds and um, having Susan here to explain a lot of the technology things.
Okay, okay.
You wanna do agencies?
Let's do it.
I think we can do agencies fairly quickly.
Yeah.
So, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten agencies asking for no money.
Can you pass me?
Oh, eleven, counting the TJ EMS Council, which we've been fighting over for the last six years, has finally quit asking us for money. So that leads me to my prior conclusion that we shouldn't have to get.
Well, there are agencies in a little bit of turmoil right now with OEMS and the whole investment scandal that they're feeling like.
No money for them.
Yeah, they were not gonna ask for money.
All right.
I have a.
So let's, let's just start at the beginning and roll our way down on this.
All right. Ready, Ernie?
Okay, well, EMS Council?
That one, they included some items, um, is it under Nelson or E? Yeah, that one, they've added a new item, um, that's about forty-eight thousand and ninety-two dollars, countywide expenses paid by council, which include ESO reporting, the Knox box fee, phone, VLS training, Fire Academy, active nine-one-one and stay dry, which I'm not sure. David may have an idea about that, I don't know what that means.
Um, phone, I think is what that is, the phone, I think.
The stay dry is phone, okay.
No, I don't, what, what letter are they?
They're under N.
Okay.
They're the last one, N, I think.
It would be nice if there were letters.
O.
On that page. No, N is.
So they're.
M is in Mary, Gary?
N is Nelson County EMS.
That's, I've got Community Development Foundation.
Keep going.
Okay, in the same tab?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's the blue divided.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah. So the majority of their increase is that, those new expenses that they put in for the first time.
And we talked about that, I think I prepared you all that that number was gonna be larger this year because the departments were paying for a lot of things out of pocket and not submitting, um, those requests to the county, so that's where that came from, this.
And, and those discussions were, was it discussed at all that any of like the fire funds or forceful life funds were used for any of those particular items? I mean, we can certainly look at our reports and see what those funds are spent on, but.
Yeah. I mean, kind of regardless, fifty-five K is still, sounds like we're kinda on the hook for it.
My concern with the fire departments is they're having to pay for more and more things.
Yeah.
Um, you know, the, you can correct me when I misspeak, but I mean, the turnout gear they're having to do every five years, these oxygen packs, um, they don't go without cost. And then we have a group of people that are not educated and asking for donations. Uh, you know, and so they're getting less and less money from the public, um, and that's gonna fall on the county. Um, I'm not sure that, um.
What line is it on their request that, um, includes the other items?
Um, it's down kinda at the bottom in, in the yellow, right above the NFPA requirement.
Oh, they didn't put it, ah, okay, they didn't split it out by the, okay, I see.
And then, do we have a central place that orders these things and distributes them so we can get better deals or, or all of them just dangling out there on their own, trying to do their best still?
I don't know, I don't know how well they use the council for any of that, if there's anybody that does it before all the agencies.
I think, for the most part, they're doing their own thing and getting, now, I do think they get some things like phone, um, they do that in, as a group. And they're trying to do the, some training, um, they are trying to pool that, uh, Fire Academy. But, yeah, they, they do try to, when they can, pool their resources. So the Knox fee, that's something new, you all know what the Knox fee is, so that's a box, um, on schools, um, I don't know who else has it now.
Other public buildings, all of ours do, I think.
They have Lutwinger Green too. They have Lutwinger Green.
Okay, yeah, yeah, and that's a, um, it's like a lockbox for a key, so they can get in. So we get, they have a key to that box and then that box is a key to the, what they're trying to get into.
So I'd say leave it.
Yeah, I'd say leave it, they're pretty much non-negotiable.
Yeah, all right. Health Department.
They have a fairly large increase due to insurance.
Is this?
That and the rent.
And this is just our mandated, basically we have to pay this, don't we?
Well, there's a split, there's a, there's a local portion, um.
What's this under?
Blue Ridge Health Department, that's their first tab. So they, if you recall, they're gonna have a full year of their new rent coming up, which was about ninety-six hundred dollars, um, annually. So that's a lot of the seventeen-eight.
They're.
But doesn't the state pay a portion of that?
They do pay a portion of that, um, I'm trying to think if that was just the local, or kind of re- response.
You said ninety-six hundred annually?
Yes, that's how much more rent.
Oh, oh.
Increase.
I said say ninety-six, ninety-six hundred dollars.
Yeah. Um, so let's see, the new rent, new local share, actually, yes, the new local share will be about ten thousand dollars more than the current local share. So they built in a three percent staff salary increase starting July, um, so local funding request increased by six point three percent to account for salary increases in a portion of the community health worker supervisor's salary. But do anticipate a continued increase in clinical revenue due to increased service capacity in the new Heritage Center space. So the county's local share is forty-five percent and the state's share is fifty-five percent.
Sounds like we're stuck with this one.
I'm good with it.
Region ten didn't do an addition. I would say any of these agencies that asked for no change in revenue, we just leave it, unless there's one you specifically think is different. So Region ten, just since they didn't ask for anything different, just leave that as zero.
Yep.
Piedmont asked for seven dollars. I think that's, that's just a state metric, right?
Yeah.
So, I'd say we leave Piedmont at seven dollars. Thomas Jefferson's Water. Those guys did a lot.
Yeah.
For our community.
Yeah, it's probably pretty minimal.
Leave the one thousand? What do you think, Eric?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
PDC dropped nine grand, that's good.
Well, the reason for that is this year's budget included an additional ten thousand euro con- contribution for the regional housing needs assessment, yeah.
It's the same.
So it's really the same.
Okay.
So leave it as they requested, any more?
Yeah.
Now, the library's got a huge jump.
And that's the one that's the insurance, large jump.
Wow.
Are they shocked around?
Is that a work comp thing or is that a?
That is, I think they're, they're in the Charlottesville city, um, pool when it comes to their benefits, so they have to take whatever Charlottesville gets. What else is, all right.
I mean, their programs are exceptional, so.
They are, they.
Yeah.
They do a lot of things over there. Yeah, they had, they budgeted for a ten percent increase in the health insurance, and they got a thirty point six percent increase.
So do we leave it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Leave it, uh, zero out the EMS council?
Well, let's talk about MACA.
You wanna skip, let's, we're almost there.
We're almost there.
We're almost there, David.
I'm, I'm on their website.
Alright, so Java doesn't want more money, let's not give them more money. How's that sound?
I love what they do, too.
Yeah, Java, oh yeah.
Yeah.
John?
John went down.
That's surprising.
Well, there's services, uh, when is the next time John is supposed to present to us?
Um, we don't have any of them scheduled, so.
Who's their executive director, do you know, Ernie?
John?
Yeah.
Uh, Brad Burdett. Oh, no, no, he's the board chair, sorry, sorry, no, I don't know.
Well, I mean, it's, I'm not gonna fight.
I'm not gonna fight him over that, so let's give him less money.
Yeah.
My only concern is if they're decreasing their, um.
Are they decreasing services?
Are they decreasing services because that does affect Java?
Yeah.
Right.
A lot.
Let's see what they say, I'll look. They said they are projecting a modest one and a half percent reduction in our request based on hours that resemble the current service hours.
Yeah.
They welcome a conversation on providing a higher level of service to the residents of Nelson County.
Yeah.
I think they need to come present to the board at some point in the spring.
Yeah.
But I would, I'm not gonna refuse the thirteen hundred. Alright, now we're down to MACA, aren't we?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
So, I, I was, I compared last year's request to this year's request. Last year's request was for emergency assistance, project discovery, and early head start. And they've dropped early head start altogether and added after-school. Now, I can't tell you any more than that, I'm not sure what that means or how it affects.
Wasn't part of this, wasn't after-school supposed to be at the Heritage Center?
Heritage Center was gonna be like a, a daycare.
That was separate.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I begrudgingly gave them money last year, where I feel like we didn't get anything for it.
Who's the executive director?
They really don't.
Uh.
That's Ann's on that one.
Patricia Anderson.
Interim. I mean.
They really don't explain.
Nothing in there.
I, I think we should.
Much of anything, honestly.
Level fund them to twenty-four.
We need, I guess.
I would, I would love an update from them as to what they're doing.
Well, in this one, it says we are seeking a modest increase in funding to account for overall higher costs due to inflation, I don't, I wouldn't call this modest.
Yeah, it's not modest.
Yeah, those are in the individual programs like af-, well, that's after-school. Yeah, no significant projected differences between twenty-five and twenty-six.
But the program is totally different, if they're not doing, you know, if they're not doing, you know, before-school.
Misleading.
I gotta say, I don't even know what they're doing.
And I guess we need a touch of a school representation to see if they're actually following through with what they, I don't know how you get that.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything recently about whatever services they may or may not be providing.
Alright, so we've put a big question mark on this one.
I was gonna say, we should just.
Invite them to a work session if you all would like that.
Let's do that.
Well, or we bring them down to FY twenty-three funding, and then we get their attention and tell them, hey, you need to holler at us.
Yeah, but then, you know, then they're stuck with what they want.
I've got it, that's true, I mean, we could.
I mean, we're not gonna up.
They have to go, yes, there's no way it's gonna up.
Right, that's why it would be good to talk to them first. And if we've got concerns that way, we can talk to them, but I don't, let them know.
I, the last lady was just not truthful.
Well, I don't wanna.
Rehash that?
Yeah, they, clearly, they were not in a good, haven't been in a good position for a while, and I don't know that they're any better, that's just the thing.
Yeah.
So question mark, they're coming to see us just as John does?
Well, do you?
We will not be.
For John, you just wanna, you wanna report during a regular board session?
Probably.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need them.
Okay, but MACA should come to a budget work session.
Probably.
Yes.
Alright, Shelter for Health, these guys are good. I say we give them their four hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Put Hills Child Advocacy Center, did y'all ever have a chance to go there? I did.
I've been there twice.
You did?
Yeah.
It's kinda, it's a sad, necessary thing that we have to continue to contribute to.
Yeah.
It's kids that are in some really, really bad situations, and these guys are, I'm not gonna say like victim witness, in-between, but they're kind of like the help.
Yeah, and they have facilities that we just don't have at the, at DSS right now.
I, I say we stick, they want seven forty-five, it's easy. OAR, I feel like we argued with them last year.
I don't even.
That's the, uh, that is the probation, post, pre-trial, post-trial probation people.
Right.
So there's, basically, they kinda, I think they're, are they part of drug court, Ernie? OAR?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. So they, it looks like all of their programs, I think they asked for a slight increase in. So like, uh, Program One, the pre-trial services, was a five hundred and fifty dollar increase from last year, um. Let's see, Program Two. Program Two, they're asking for a three hundred and three dollar increase for the local probation services. And then, the criminal justice planner, four hundred and thirty-seven more dollars.
Wow, that's not terrible.
No, this is.
So each, each program is not a huge.
I'd say we just give them the twenty-four hundred.
Yep.
Jessica, do you need more info on them?
Nope, uh, well, I'm just, for my own interest, how many people are they touching and helping?
Four, let's see, Program Three, they're expecting their help, let me see. Nelson, six people for the criminal justice planner program, local probation, uh, beneficiaries are forty. And then, the pre-trial.
That's pretty good.
Is.
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five?
Yeah. And they service Nelson people through the ACRJ.
Seventy-five.
So let's keep that.
Yeah, I'd say we leave the twenty-four hundred. Uh, EDA, Jessica, how much money have we given them?
I, I wanna give it to them.
Let's give it to them.
The thirty-one hundred is their usual ask, um, and five thousand dollar increase is for, um, the stra- strategic planning study.
Sounds good, done. Alright, zero dollars for the Central J Economic Development Partnership, no increase there. And then there's, NCCDF is no increase.
Yeah.
Do we wanna leave those no increases?
Community Development Foundation is actually doing more than they projected they were gonna be last year, not sure exactly how it planned out. And they're taking over the, um, the high school program, the high school program.
Yeah.
What does that mean?
They're doing what?
They're doing the high school house.
Oh.
Cause Habitat's not doing it anymore?
Yeah.
Yeah. They've got four lots that they're gonna be working on.
I think they, um, they relinquished the regional section eight housing voucher management, so it freed them up to really kinda focus on their mission.
Yeah.
She does seem happier.
They, so they, it's, so they requested an additional twenty-five thousand to support the high school house project.
But that's not.
That's not on this.
Right.
I'd say we visit that separate.
That's funny, it's in their, uh.
Did it not make it to the spreadsheet?
It's in, it's in the, uh, transmittal letter.
I mean, I'd be interested in giving them the twenty-five K, I also am more interested in seeing what the pro forma expectation is, where it's going, if it's gonna be, all that.
I guess. So they are asking for more, they just didn't make it to the thing?
I think that's true.
Flat operational funding plus an additional twenty-five thousand to support the house.
And it's twenty-five thousand for four houses?
Well, Habitat is doing a reduction, but it's only a thousand dollars.
Well, it's actually, it's actually, um, level, we paid them extra this year because they were late sending us their payment request for the previous quarters, and so we paid two of their quarters at the beginning of this fiscal year, so.
What do we decide on NCCDF?
So.
We're still there.
I mean, my question is, I guess, is would you wanna keep that?
Where's the twenty-five thousand?
Would you wanna keep the twenty-five separate from their operation?
Absolutely, I think that would be wise on their part, too. But I think we need to visit that at a board meeting.
I mean, I'm certainly in favor of the twenty-five thousand, it just depends on whether it's recurring or one time or what, you just don't know.
Yeah, I think, I think they just need to ask.
And how much are we spending, were we spending with Habitat for the same project?
I don't think we, the county spent any money on the Habitat project.
Right.
Yeah. But you know, I think there's, there's benefits to having the Community Development Foundation and the schools
Sure.
being hand in hand, you know, they've got a specific, as opposed to a regional focus.
Alright, so we, let's leave their operational as zero.
Yeah.
And then make them.
Zero, zero change.
Zero change, correct.
Okay.
And then do a presentation for the twenty-five?
Yeah.
And then what, I'm sorry, what did you say, Ernie?
So, when they say they're taking them over, they're still built by the high school students.
Yes, yes.
They are.
They're just basically procuring the land, putting it there, finishing it, and then selling it.
So this is for doing title insurance and moving it and?
All that, yeah, if I'm speculating.
For four high school houses, is that?
No, they're just doing.
Oh, you said they had four.
They have four lots, and each of them are gonna be, um.
Is that, I'm surprised they can get that done?
Yeah.
At twenty-five thousand?
It's not just twenty-five K.
Okay.
I know it's not.
No.
It, I mean, I'd be impressed.
We would like to ask that you commit twenty-five thousand to help us with the next house.
Oh, one.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
Yes.
We've had initial talks with CTE instructor, um, about supporting home building program, blah, blah. We would like to ask that you commit twenty-five thousand dollars to help us with the next house.
So.
Revisit the twenty-five K on a different day.
Yeah.
Keep their operational as zero for that request.
But, but put it on the agenda for our next meeting, so we can consider it?
Well, that's.
It's for next year, right, yeah, so we can, you can consider it at a future work session.
Okay.
It's not this year, it's next year.
Oh, okay, gotcha.
Yep.
I don't think they're doing a high school house, they, they don't start it, if they hadn't started it this past fall, I don't think they started until the fall.
Well, I think, I thought they were still, Pete, uh, Habitat was still, you know, you know, they, they did one of their houses this year. And they said, and they were projecting, working on the other one this year, I don't know if they have or not.
I don't know. Um, can we move on from NCCDF?
Remind me who the community innovative collaborative is?
Uh, the lady you met at the Lunsford, not Lunsford, Levickston merchant place, that, it's back to SBA loan people. I can't remember her name.
The one that spoke, who was running the meeting?
Rebecca?
No, Becca didn't come to that one, it was a different girl.
Well, I'm all about training young people how to show up to a job on time and do their resumes, I'm.
You wanna do the two sixty-eight?
It doesn't seem like that much of a jump.
No, I say we do it.
Okay.
Then we got four zeros. I say we do all four zeros.
Yeah.
Now, the Virginia Career Works Piedmont, isn't that what you serve on, Jessica?
Yeah.
Would you give them money?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
How much would you give them?
The twenty-nine forty-two.
I don't understand why it says we didn't give them.
It may not have been included in the agencies previously, because I, I had to add this line here to the spreadsheet since we, it wasn't shown we gave them.
Yeah, did they just ask us for us?
I mean, we gave them money last year, though.
But maybe not through the budget.
Maybe, it might have been through a different process, different time of the year.
So, wanna give them their twenty-nine hundred?
I do.
Yes.
Um, cause they, they've lost a lot of state funding, and they do do some good things.
Yeah, their, um, their budget worksheet that they filled out says they got twenty-nine forty-two last year, so I'm not sure about that.
Alright, we'll agree for forming arts.
Yeah.
Ernie?
Yes.
Don't we vote on that separate times of the year?
We consider the resolution for the application for ECA funding, which is a forty-five hundred off match, which I've been processing on that right now.
So I guess we should just leave that as zero for now, until they do it, Ernie?
It's a set amount.
Forty-five hundred dollars?
Is that right?
It's a set amount of forty-five.
Forty-five hundred, okay.
For total, not a thousand.
Okay.
Okay.
That application is due April first, so we'll bring a resolution back.
Okay. Okay.
So keep that at zero? Alright, how much money have we spent?
Well, you missed Habitat for Humanity.
Oh, I did.
Yeah, I'm reading it over right now.
So how active?
So that was the, let's see.
He spent two million.
Yeah.
They said their next big goal is to identify affordable land.
I think.
So it looks like they don't have anything else going.
Last time I spoke with Sam Harkins, that's, he had indicated that was their biggest hurdle in Nelson right now because they had utilized all their existing lots.
Cause they've got one, oh, this says it should be done in June, so I guess they're working on the other one now. So it must have been the house build for this year, right?
Let's say this, this twenty-five hundred dollar funding request is for the homeownership program split between those expenses and the staff who will continue.
I mean, I'm fine with giving them what they're asking for.
Yes, let's give them what they're asking for.
Twenty-five hundred. Agencies?
Okay, we didn't make any changes.
There we did.
Unless you do.
We gave some increases.
Yeah.
Alright, MACA's a question mark, and you'll have a question I have, is TJ EMS, we're keeping that a zero dollar?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely.
Yep.
And make sure you guys put your thing in this little fancy plastic slip right here.
Oh.
Cause I lose this.
It's okay, it's in the back of your car, we know where to find it.
It's gonna sit in my car.
I like the different size folder.
Yeah, it's the color for me.
A manageable folder.
Alright, we have to continue speaking.
We won't lose it.
I will not lose it.
Candy, is there anything else we need to do?
Other business?
No, sir.
Okay.
Other business.
Well, then, um, I will, uh, consider a motion to adjourn and continue till February twenty-sixth at six P M for the joint work session with planning.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
We're all in favor.